Good evening, everyone. We will call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Jennifer, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Bazer.
Here.
Ms. Buden.
Here.
Ms. Christian.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Patel. Ms. Dr. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Unical.
Here.
We have quorum. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda and move into new business? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Thanks, Maura. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Grace. Jennifer, can you please do a roll call?
Mr. Bazer.
Yes.
Ms. Buden.
Yes.
Ms. Christian.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Unical.
Yes.
Moving into public comment, I see that we have many members of the public here with us. Are any of them planning to make comment now? Or would you all like to wait until your time on the agenda? Great. Thanks for being here. Staff reports.
So we have a couple of presentations this evening. I am very excited to first bring up our teen librarian, Stephanie Bremner, who is in charge of our Teen Summer Volunteer Program. And she brought some of our teen volunteers with us. And she's going to share with the board some of what she plans and does. And the teens are going to share some of what they did this summer. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Stephanie.
So I have a little presentation just about the program. And then at the end, I have some, if my volunteers that came are going to just share a few kind of thoughts and experiences that they've had in the program. So the High School Summer Volunteer Program is probably like one of our biggest programs that we have that runs in youth services that we do every summer. So just to start, some of the goals of the program are really to engage all the teens in the community, to have them get involved, that they're able to, this is probably when they're in the library the most. So that's really great, the connection that they're all able to make with each other. People are meeting new friends and new groups of people. And they're also able to connect with library staff. We have a lot of, a number of groups that are led by different staff members. So different volunteers get to know different members of the staff. They get to know me very well, or at least they get to know the teen librarian email very well. But we're able to sort of be adults that aren't teachers, that they're able to go to for stuff. I know I have written letters of recommendation and been a contact on job, stuff like that. So being that kind of person for them is a great connection. Communication is a huge one, just practicing social skills, kind of workplace and school skills, whether it's just being responsible for the work that they're assigned throughout the summer, but also like managing their emails. You know, emailing is done, is like our main source of communication. And I email the teens directly and they have to communicate with me when they can't make something. They have to confirm, they have to send in their application and everything. So it's a good kind of practice for that. And then also just inclusion, we create space and opportunity for everyone. We work with lots of different schedules. We work with people who might need some sort of accommodations. And it's a great way for the volunteers to communicate and work with different people, volunteers and just the public and new people every day. So just a quick rundown of the different assignments that they have. There are quite a few. The probably most visible one is the Summer Reading Desk Assistants, who help check in and log all the reading at the Summer Reading Desk, along with our paid Summer Reading Aides, but the two of them work together. We have a series of groups that meet with a staff member that runs them. And they're like weekly or bi-weekly meetings. We have the YA Book Group, which is one that I run, where the teens work on the displays in the loft. They help pull books, they create book lists, they help with weeding, all sorts of stuff. We have the Garden Group that helps with our community garden. The Chess Group runs all the chess programs. We have a Craft Group that cuts and preps and stuffs bags for the youth services area that go all year long, monthly, we have new crafts. The Video Social Media Group make lots of TikToks and they take pictures for Instagram. Adult Services has an assistant, same with admin, that both do stuff upstairs and then, you know, filing and shredding and stuff, anything that admin needs. And then we have, well, Program Assistants are ones that get assigned to all sorts of different programs that run throughout the summer and they're there to help. So that's very hands-on. Some new ones we have this year are the Program Prep Group, which is a specific group that helped prep craft items for upcoming programs and like kind of make examples and that kind of stuff. We had a teen-led discussion group. And they were the ones who actually read a book that was for like a middle school age. And they came up with the discussion questions and the projects. And we had an early learning play group that came out during storytime and had a whole like play, storytime, sensory activity after our storytimes. So there was a lot of different stuff that everyone did. This year was the largest, I think it's ever been for the library. As you can kind of see, around 80 is where we've been roughly for the last few years. There's a couple dips. 2020, obviously COVID, there were a lot of teens that were at home doing some virtual work and just not in the library as much. And then it kind of went back up. 2023 was the year, was my first year running the program. I was hired mid-March that year to be the teen librarian. And I had to get it all ready to go by April or May, which was why it was a little bit, that was purposeful, just so that it was kind of a quick turnaround. But just the last three years, I've seen a significant jump. This year, I was not anticipating 117. So it was great that there were so many people that wanted to be involved. And this was the total amount of hours of volunteering just for this summer. So in total, they had 1,300 hours just in June, July and August. And August is really only like the first week. So pretty impressive amount of volunteering. So finally, I just have a little introduction. If you guys want to come stand up here, do you want to stand up? These are three of our volunteers for the, for the summer. If you guys want to just introduce yourselves and just kind of say a little bit about your experience. And yeah.
I guess I can start. So I'm Vivian, I'm a junior at GBN. It's my third year volunteering. And actually, like, I took advantage of the variety of like volunteer groups because like my first year doing it, like, I didn't really know what they were about. And I ended up being a program assistant. So with that, like, I guess I got assigned to like so many like different activities. Like I could go in, like one time, it was like with the baby book group, I guess. And so I got to like be with these little like babies and their, usually their moms. And it was like a really cool experience because they're, like, I got to help out with so many different programs. And I was with like different volunteers each time. And then like the year after that, I did the Summer Reading Desk, which was also really cool because like I always did like the Summer Reading Program when like I was little. And so seeing like little elementary schoolers come in and like, look with their hours and they get like prizes, I feel like it was really like fun to be in like the older position. And then this summer, I was in the YA Book Group. And like, I really didn't know what it was about. And I ended up also like being in it with some of my friends. So like, I was like, oh, you're also volunteering? And so it's very different than like my other experiences. Because like every week, we would like kind of work on like different projects throughout the library, like creating like book displays. And I really like to read. And I mean, with high school, I've read less than I used to. But like creating like book displays off of books that I love and getting to share that with other people was really cool. And like just one more thing, like we saw how, like in this year, like so many more people joined. And I feel like I noticed like a lot of my friends were like, oh, should I sign up for this volunteering? I'm like, yes, you should.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julia. I'm also a junior at GBN. This is my very first year of volunteering here at the Northbrook Public Library. I was a part of the Video and Social Media Group. So we filmed a lot of TikToks on the Northbrook Public Library TikTok account. If you haven't checked it out, you should and follow it. I had a really great, great time. I actually found out about this program and this opportunity on Instagram. I followed the Northbrook Public Library. And I was like, this is great to gain some experience. And this is something I want to do in the future, like marketing and social media. So it was really great to do that. And I also wanted to volunteer and help out in the community. And yeah, I had a really great time doing this. I met a lot of new people and also saw a lot of people from school. And it was great to see them in the summer because I don't really see them that often. And it was really fun. And I love being able to share my ideas towards TikTok and help promote the library. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Hannah. I'm a senior at GBN. And I was originally told about volunteering at the library through friends. I think it was a great opportunity to build a, build community. When I was little, I loved going to the library, doing the programs here. And it was really cool being kind of like on the other side of things. And it also helped me reconnect to the library, especially as I got older and had less time. Another important thing about the volunteering experience, I think, was building like communication skills through helping out at programs. Especially like when you're running a group and there's like little younger kids who might be struggling with a game, you really have to guide them through. And it's given me the skills, I feel like, to apply in other situations. And it gave me the confidence to pursue like leadership positions at school and a job.
I'm a teenager again.
The parent of a former summer volunteer. I know that my son enjoyed it very much when he was doing this. And I think it is a great opportunity and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
That's great. And thank you for the great TikToks. I've been enjoying them.
More coming.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So the start of the meeting is very exciting. I hope that the rest of the meeting doesn't disappoint. Because we now have another wonderful staff member, Caitlin Hannan, who is an Adult Services Librarian and also the co-chair for our One Book, One Northbrook this year, which as you know, is coming up in October and is featuring Symphony of Secrets. And so Caitlin is here to talk to you all today about what is coming. You may also notice, we just, it was perfect timing this week. Got our beautiful One Book, One Northbrook brochures, which are in all of your blue folders. So. And the newsletter, yeah. We've gotten so many comments already on it. It's beautiful, right? Mina's amazing. So Caitlin, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Kate. So yes, hi, everyone. As she said, I'm Caitlin. I'm with the Adult Services Department and also part of the One Book, One Northbrook Committee, planning everything. And so I wanted to first, because I know we have a couple of new board members, just a brief overview again for what One Book, One Northbrook is. It is a program initiative that we have to encourage the community to read a certain title and then come together through related programming to further explore and discuss this book's themes. We started this back in 2019 and we decided to plan this as an every other year event. And so this year will of course be October of 2025. And when we select the book for the program, the main criteria that we are looking at is of course really good reviews or awards that it may have. We also look at when it was published. Does it have multiple different formats for people to be able to access it in a variety of ways? As well as if the book has themes of diversity? Do we think it would appeal to both adults and teens? Because we want to get as wide of an age range as we can for the community read. And of course, the potential for a wide range of different programs that we can do throughout the month. One of those specifically being an author event. We decided as time was going on that we really would want an author to be available to speak at the library. So that has also become part of the criteria. And so this year, as I'm sure you're all aware, it's Symphony of Secrets by Brendan Slougham. And briefly, of course, it's about a professor who uncovers a shocking secret about the most famous American composer of all time, that his music was stolen from a young black composer. And so it alternates between 1920s New York and present day as the professor seeks to uncover the truth and to correct history. So we're very excited for this book. And the different programs we have coming up as well. Of course, we do have the actual author coming. He will be here October 15th in the evening in the auditorium. So we're very excited we get to have him in conversation here. We also have a multitude of different programs that apply to many different themes of the book throughout the whole month. So we have a concert that will be taking place on the 22nd. We have a really neat program on synesthesia. So it's specifically about seeing colors when you hear music. I'm very excited for that one. I helped book it. So that one will be coming up on the 9th. We also have other ones like The Art of Sound. So this is about graphic notation, which is also a very fascinating topic as I learned more about it. And we have a whole selection of other things, as well as a movie screening that ties into the book's themes. We have a couple of different book discussions that we will lead as staff for people. Excuse me. And we are going to do a big kickoff event to start all of this. It's going to be on Saturday, October 4th. And it's going to be from 10:30 AM to 1:00 PM. It'll take place in the lobby and the polygroom. And we've got an array of different things that will be going on. So we do have a live jazz concert that will be taking place that morning, as well as a kids' craft activity. There will be pizza. And there will also be the opportunity for people to enter a drawing for free tickets to the Northbrook Symphony Orchestra. So we're really excited that we get to work with them as well throughout the entire month of October with these different programs. So yes, that's, that's everything we have coming up for it. Thank you.
Caitlin, there's been an opportunity in the past for board members to volunteer at things like the kickoff event. Do you anticipate that that will be an opportunity this year?
Of course, yeah. Anyone would like to, you are more than welcome to stop by that Saturday.
Barbara was amazing last time with the crafts. Do you remember all the helping you did? I mean, that was amazing. And the kids just like flock to her. It was amazing.
Former teacher.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, Caitlin.
Thank you.
For coming.
It's very exciting.
It is, yes. I've been working on it since 2019 each year. And it's really neat to see how much we do each year.
All right. So I, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions from my report. I did want to also just mention that I am on vacation next week. Kelly is here. It's going to be an uneventful week and I will then return after Labor Day. I'm not jinxing it. And I'm happy to answer any other questions from my.
Was it all done? Very well done and very easy and clear.
Okay, good. Thank you for that feedback. Any other questions or feedback for Kate? Moving on to board member reports.
We attended, Jan and I attended the Room Rental Policy Review Working Group. And we had what I think is going to be our, possibly our final meeting. And how very, everyone was extremely engaged. And I think some really good discussions came out of it. So I'm looking forward to reading the updated.
I dropped by the drop in genealogy on August 6th. I was curious to see how that operated. And what was interesting to me was that I had meant to speak with the volunteers and I did get to a little bit, but they were hopping. They had a lot of customers. And so I sort of more observed them and shared it with them. But.
So you didn't uncover any genealogical secrets?
I did not. I was, I was, you know, I would have been a back of the line. There was quite a few people who were very interested in the volunteers, who I believe that they come from an organization that.
Right. The North Shore Genealogical Society.
Volunteer to staff the table upstairs.
Yeah.
People just.
Every month.
Walk over and sit down and say, I'd like some help. And, you know, yeah, it was great. And I was glad I, glad I stopped by.
I volunteered to assist with that program at one point. And it was like feeling back an onion, looking at all the ways that you can find information, excuse me. And one of the most interesting that everybody was excited about is we tracked back a family who were circus performers in Russia.
Oh.
And that was just this great revelation. And the member was ecstatic to find it. It is like a treasure hunt.
Any other board member reports?
I attended the ILA Trustee Forum meeting. Two weeks later, I don't even remember.
It's gonna happen soon.
Time means nothing, which is a virtual meeting of trustees throughout the state of Illinois. It's just a chance for people to share information and catch up. So it was helpful to hear what's going on at other libraries, particularly a number of libraries represented have done renovations recently. So that was helpful to get some contacts there and learn more. And I shared a little bit about what's happening here. Talked about our Summer Reading numbers in particular and bragged about them. And everyone was impressed, as they should be.
Impressive numbers, we are.
I did an online workshop for the, it was like Libraries of AI. And they hated on it. And there was a lot of people on that workshop and the chat was very busy the whole time. And it was really cool to see like people from all over being engaged, like not only listening to Matt Topic, who is a former colleague of mine, the other woman. But there was a lot of Northbrook Public Library people on. And it was really interesting. The chat was almost as interesting as the presentation. So it was really good.
I was on that one too. And it was, it was fascinating because they talked about the differences. Like, so they had, not to be in opposition, but they kind of the, someone who was very pro-AI and someone who was more AI cautious. And, and so they had these just really nuanced conversations, which I think you need to have when you talk about AI, because it isn't just an all or nothing proposition. And I thought that Rails, who put the program on, did such a good job of navigating that space and creating opportunities to dig deeper and not just have, you know, quick like, oh no, it's all awful or it's all wonderful. But to really dig into the pros and cons and the things that we as libraries need to be thinking about. So. Moving into unfinished business, we have an update on the Room Rental Policy Review Working Group. We do. So as Maura mentioned, we had our meeting last night and we had a really robust discussion. People clearly spent a lot of time reading policies, stuff that I had sent out from other libraries, really thinking about this. Biz Lindsay Ryan, who facilitated the conversation, did a great job of, you know, creating the framework for people and then giving them space to reflect individually in small groups and in the large groups. I have, I think, about six pages of suggestions and notes for things to look at. And I think my biggest takeaway was that when people come together in our community, people can have very civil and productive conversations. It doesn't mean that we're all going to 100% agree on everything and that that is okay. I think that this is a very complicated topic. I was just talking to one of the committee members right before the board meeting. She's like, yeah, it's complicated. Like that is, that is, that sums it up. It is complicated. And Biz, I thought, did a really good job of laying out the complication so that people weren't just like, well, the library should, blah, blah, blah. So I'm very excited to work on taking all of those recommendations and thoughts and incorporating them into an updated policy with Julie Tappendorf, our attorney. The next steps are, we're working on that now. And then when I come back from vacation, Julie and I are going to touch base and hopefully finalize that and then send it back out to the committee. And then at that point, we don't think, we don't know. I don't know that we'll need to have another meeting, but we'll, we'll see when people. Yeah. And then the plan is to have it brought to the September board meeting, where I'll summarize all of the feedback we got and kind of what went into why we made what changes we made. So anything else? I mean, Janet and Maura were there.
I would add that I would agree that Biz Lindsay Ryan did a wonderful job of making sure that we stayed on track and making sure that we were, you know, we were following the agenda that was set out. But at the same time, making sure that everybody's voice was heard. It was very impressive. So and I have confidence in all the constant world and Julie as well. So I think we're in good shape.
Yeah. And I, I would add that I, I've seen this before. And one thing that's of such value, I think, in groups like this, you only wish you could sort of, you know, have everybody in the group, is that when people take the time to learn about issues, it very quickly becomes evident that things are not black and white. It is complicated. It, there are shades of gray. And I, I watch people sort of come to understand that. And you hope that they are sharing that messaging to a broader audience in our community.
Has there been any discussion in the group around the communication strategy when the policy is set?
No, Biz put pretty firm guardrails off that the implementation piece needs to be coming from the staff. So we did not really get into that. It was more about the policy itself. And then a people did have comments on, you know, any procedural changes that we would want to consider. There wasn't too many on the procedural end. I know Tracy, one of our staff members who's on it, who actually is in charge of meeting room bookings, was actually hoping for, I think, more because she has a very long list of procedural changes that she wants to consider. And so I think it's, yeah, so no, not really. Moving into data analysis, ongoing support. Yeah, so I'd like to invite Mallory Edgar up. Mallory, do you want to come sit by Jennifer? That's probably the easiest spot to have you so that it's not like weird. And so, or for those who've forgotten, Mallory was here a few months ago. Mallory Edgar Edgar is from Fifth Star Collective. And she is here today to continue our conversation from last month about ongoing data analysis support. I did share in the packet kind of three different options for the board. Mallory is gonna kind of talk more broadly, answer questions on the first two options. And, and she and I, and Kelly as well, because Kelly's been very involved with all the data stuff. We'll be happy to answer any additional questions that come up during the course of the conversation. So Mallory, hi. Welcome back.
Thanks for having me. Did you want me to kind of just run through what some of the things that are new from what you would have seen last month?
Okay. That sounds good.
So thanks for having me back again. And thank you all also too for when the first iteration of it was brought to you last month, for like being so engaged with it and asking such great, great questions. I think it helped us add even more to the existing contract and come up with some other options that might be of interest to you all as well. So there are two different ones, like Kate outlined in her memo in the packet. There are two contract options drafts that are included. One of them is for ongoing data evaluation support. So that's the retainer-based one. It's, so it's a edited version of the one you would have seen last month. And I'll go through, I've written notes for myself and highlighted where the additions are. So I'll just kind of go through that, try not to belabor it too much, but just to make sure you can see what is different from last time. And then the other one is a data project support. So it's a project-based one that is billed hourly. And so you're going to see like, well, you would have seen if you have read through it, similar content across both of them. The difference being that in that project-based one, those priority projects that Kate identified that she wanted really to focus on in this first year have associated hour estimates and cost estimates associated with that as well. Whereas that's not the case in the retainer-based one, since it's wrapped in as the full scope of work. So just running through, let's look at the retainer-based one first. Just to note, I won't note every instance of this because I also don't have all of them marked. But we incorporated all of the feedback from the attorney Kate had talked to. So there are kind of like here and there, certain phrases, certain words, like full sentences throughout the contract that are updated with the language that they suggested. The first place you see that is in the introduction on the first page where it has, you know, now, therefore. You probably guessed that was, that was attorney language that was added. But that's the first chunk where you see that. And then you really mainly see the additions from the attorney later, after the services and deliverables section, where there are entire sections that we added, like the FOIA section, things like that, that are later in the document. That are later in the document. But if we go into what is the second page of the retainer based contract, the services and deliverable section, that's really where you see the bulk of the additions since the version that you would have seen last month. So the way that that structured, this section is structured, I kind of think about it like a funnel sort of, that it goes from talking in the broadest language to talking in the most specific language. And I know that was something that came up last month where there were some like questions or concerns about like there not being kind of enough specificity with some of the deliverables and it, you know, kind of maybe feeling sort of laundry listy or kitchen sink like. And so I wanted, I think part of that probably, I could have done a better job in that initial draft of explaining the why behind starting with those more general descriptions. So I added, you can see that section that starts with please note at the table below, that like semi bold section. That first line was already in it, but I added that next sentence, though this list is intentionally broad. Because I think I didn't, I didn't name that specifically in the first time around. But the idea behind starting off with this broad table of things that say, you know, revised or newly developed tools for data entry or data collection, data visualizations, talking in those more general terms, did that purposefully with this being a retainer based option, because I wanted to make sure it was the widest net that could capture the different things that might come up throughout the year. Because otherwise, if we didn't have that, everything that wasn't explicitly named, we're like, is that out of scope? Is it in the contract or not? So I wanted to make sure that I started off with that broad language so that there was flexibility on the library's part to be able to say like, oh, there's this thing we could really use help with. And you know that it's within scope. You don't have to guess about whether or not it is. So there's nothing changed in the content of that table from what you would have seen last month. Flipping over on to what is page three of that, we go kind of one more level, more specific. This is also the same content that was in last month's. The only addition was I added in the intro section that linked to the phase one wrap up memo, because the content that's in this list where we're getting a little bit more specific about some, not just saying data visualizations, we're saying it would be nice to have a dashboard for this, 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 and this. Not just saying data management tools, saying we want data management tools for IPLAR. So, so getting a little bit more specific there. These were all pulled from that phase one wrap up memo that I had put together. I think that would have been, or I put it, March, in the March meeting, when we were in the midst of the monthly statistics project. So that's all the same content. What is brand new in this version is what starts at the very bottom. And this is where we have outlined four priority projects for, you know, this, this first year, if it did turn into a multi-year engagement, the first year of a retainer based engagement. And this came, you know, directly from talking with Kate, that she looked through that laundry list, thought about the things that were sort of on, on your wish list when it comes to data for the library and named these four things that were these monthly statistics dashboard supplements, which includes having that internal only version that is more kind of for data discovery for staff as opposed to the, the current version right now, that's a little tight, more tightened up because it's intended to be like storytelling for the public. And then the other thing that I added into that section for the supplements too was having an instructional guide for the dashboard. I put language in there too, which you probably saw where I said, this isn't, this won't be, you know, a two hundred page document that tells you how to fix every problem that could potentially come up with the dashboard. I think that would be a difficult thing to do. But I did something similar for Illinois Libraries Present when I did, made the dashboard for them, where I think, I think it was a forty page document, where it just outlined more of like the actual build and the structure of those tools and named some common things that I've come across in my time using Looker Studio dashboards that sometimes come up and people are like, oh no, the whole thing's broken. And it's actually not that complicated. So I can outline what are the steps to fix it if you see this particular error message. So I thought that would be a useful tool to have as an internal capacity thing that, again, it's not gonna tell you how to fix everything. And if there were some big overhaul you wanted to do, you might still need external help. But you could maybe address some of the, the smaller things internally. So there's that piece, the strategic plan dashboard. So that one would be, I think there would be elements that are in the monthly stats dashboard that would feed into this, right? Since we have in there data about circulation and things like that. But then there are certain pieces of data that are more unique to whatever the specific goals and activities within the strategic plan are. And so wanting to have a dashboard that speaks to sort of the status and the progress and the outcomes of, of the work related to the strategic plan. Then we have the IPLAR and Illini survey tools and processes. So that's just to, to be able to help streamline the, the process that happens every year. First half, I think that's something that we've already done some good steps towards that with the monthly stats dashboard work. But there's still a little bit more to do to get it to a place where that's more streamlined year over year, doing that. And then the last piece, and this is the, in the hourly contract, I think this is the smallest one, is the annual report support. So I know this is something that Kate had mentioned she had been wanting to do for some time. And so put that in there. You can see that's also the shortest description. That would mainly be support around like the data visualization piece and best practices for that. So that is, that's the main addition to this. The same language that's in this retainer based one is also what's in the project based one. You'll see that the difference is that there's a table on that project based one that has estimated time and estimated cost on it, where I've spelled out what hour estimates are and cost estimates are for each of those individual projects. So you can see them. And then trying to think if there's anything else. I think there was one more thing I wanted to highlight. Oh, the renewal and termination section on the retainer based one. I know that was another question. Last month it came up with the, the auto renewal, the like semi evergreen clause that's in there. And I know there were some questions too about, oh, is there an opt out? Yes, there, there was some opt out language in there. I spelled out even more to make it clear. I would never ask somebody to sign three years of working with me without an exit ramp. And I wouldn't want that for myself either. So the reason, I wanted to just say a little bit more about the reason behind that. It doesn't have, wouldn't have to stay in the contract. If you guys did want to do the retainer based version, I don't include it in every retainer based contract that I do with clients, just where it feels like it might be helpful. And specifically when it's a client that has sort of like a laundry list of projects in mind and we know from the jump, it's gonna take longer than a year to get through all those. And if you do want external support on it, wanting to go ahead and lock in that price for up to three years. So that, I think that's the biggest thing that is the benefit if you did want to keep it. Is that even if my rates went up in what would be year two of this, Northbrook isn't gonna be subject to that. So for up to three years, it stays at that same level. That's something I've liked to do, again, with the clients that makes sense for, just to try to make it a little more sustainable to continue getting this type of support and not have it be just another thing that, like everything else, that goes up in price every single year. But that said, I mean, it's up to, it would be up to all of you if you did want to go this route, if you wanted to keep that in or not. I just wanted to speak to that a little bit more. And I've talked a lot, so I will pause. And if there's anything else you want to add, Kate or Kelly? Or if there's anything you want to call out from your memo, Kate?
I think just the only other thing that Mallory did mention in the agreement is that, you know, another difference between the retainer based and the project based is that there is a pool of hours, like even with all the other projects, there would be a pool of hours for kind of more off the cuff or more like, kind of like things that pop up. Right, yeah. So like, for instance, I was talking with Linda recently and we wanted to pull some information at the end of summer reading, like what were the most popular books? And what were the things that we're doing? And like, it would have been fun to do like a little dashboard on Instagram. And that's not something that we have the capacity to do. And we know that patrons would like that, but that's like a nice to have. It's not a need to have. Like, I'm not suggesting that. But like those types of things where it might be like, oh, yeah, Mallory can do that in an hour where it would take us a day. Those types of things are something that I don't have like a huge list of examples other than to say that I know they come up a lot when Linda and I talk related to social media and the website and our newsletter, that we wish we could do more to really highlight especially our collections that we spend over a million dollars on a year. So, so yeah, that's the only other thing.
Yeah. And I think we had, I can't remember if it was us talking robbly or talking through comments in the Google Doc. But I had said that, you know, one thing that could be added, if you did want to go the project based route, is that a fifth item could be like a bank of hours. I think, think the thing you have to think about is how many you'd want in that. Because it's really, it would only be less money to go that route if you knew it was gonna be less than twenty five hours. But if it was gonna be more than twenty five hours, the retainer based approach would get you like the better deal because of the fact that I'm not putting, it's like a yield sign. The like estimate of the upper end of hours on the retainer based one is sort of how I have approached it with other clients. Not like a stop sign, the spigots turned off. Like that's, that's all we had agreed to. And I found that, that that's been really helpful. I have two other clients that I have a retainer based arrangement with. One of them is another public library. We did, it was very similar to this one in structure. And it was one that had that semi evergreen language. So we did three years. It started twenty, January twenty twenty two and then took us through December of twenty twenty four. And then we resigned a new one that takes us through December twenty twenty seven. That one scaled down though, because their needs were different. After having me for three years at a higher level, we were like, okay, they still want that support, but we maybe don't need this, this, and this. There's not as much new stuff, like big stuff that's being built. And so just did, you know, a kind of scaled down version of it, but still for that three year time period. And I think it's worked out really well just because of the flexibility that it allows. But I think that's, that's a question, you know, obviously for all of you, is if that is something that's really important, that you'd like to have that flexibility for these as needed things that you can't predict and so couldn't scope out with a lot of specificity right now. Or if that's not as important and you want to focus on just these like priority projects that were identified. So I don't think there's a wrong answer. I think it's whatever's the rightest for you.
Any questions?
I, I spent some time looking at this and I, I think I sort of still had a lot of questions. I, I wasn't sure, I was curious about things like respond to frequent marketing requests. Myself and I was thinking, kind of frequent request data, or sort of urgent data needs, how many are there? That are quick turnaround. And certainly, I, I thought some of the projects were, could be very, very useful. I was curious as to, for example, that strategic plan dashboard, would that be public facing? And then it looked like under the monthly statistics dashboard supplements, there were two items and I couldn't tell, but it looked like these were sort of maybe one offs. Like you do them once and then you, then that's it. You're kind of done. Unlike say strategic plan dashboard, which is a little more maybe ongoing. And I I gave some thought particularly to the annual report piece, having written many, many of these. I don't think I've ever written and nor in any of the examples provided, was there much data at all? One or two sprinkled through. Annual reports are generally content, gorgeous pictures and few key data points sprinkled through. So I, I couldn't, I don't, again, I don't think I've seen the kind of annual report produced by public sector or nonprofit agencies that are heavy. Tend to be marketing pieces really. So that one sort of, I wasn't quite sure we needed a high level of support in that area. My own opinion, I don't know how other board members felt, was that the per project basis made more sense. Given my understanding of what I was seeing here. And maybe that's, you know, make IPLAR data truly actionable. And I wasn't, what does actionable mean? Conduct deeper program analysis to understand effectiveness and improvement opportunities such as, like what kind of thing?
Did you want to give me examples now? Yeah. So let me start with the IPLAR data. Right now, we pull all the data, we send it in a really cumbersome platform to the state library. And then we really don't do anything else with it. We present it to the board, we present it to the staff. We don't use it to look at trends over time. We don't use it to compare to other libraries. We have access to all of that data. We can get all of the comps. We can do more benchmarking. We can look more at, we do a lot of looking at year over year and short trends. What we haven't been able to do and what I think IPLAR is uniquely situated to do because of the consistency and how it's asking for the data is to look at longer trends. Like, I know that audiobook, physical audiobook circ has gone down. But I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, the exact percentage has gone down in the last ten years. Now, do I need to be able to say the exact percentage? Maybe not. But I do think that if we want to be making, and I want us to be making more data driven decisions, I can look at a spreadsheet, but many staff are not gonna be like, oh yay. They're not gonna look at it unless it is accessible. And so having something that we could take all of that data that we have and put it into something like the data dashboard that is more actionable, that staff could then say, oh, we're working on the budget and we're only reducing the audiobook budget by ten percent, but circulation has dropped by eighty percent. Those are just made up numbers. That, that would be incredibly helpful.
And is that, is that different than the enhanced internal data dashboard?
I think it is, in addition to, the enhanced internal data dashboard is really going deeper on what we're seeing here. But it isn't really gonna be, it's still gonna be looking, based on what Mallory, Kelly and I have spoken about so far, that would really be focused still on that kind of this month, this year to this month last year, and then this year to date. It's not gonna be looking at those longer trends. And so the longer trend stuff, I see as stuff that we as a leadership team need and that the managers need. The monthly, the supplemental dashboard, that's really more for like our selectors, our programmers who are doing the day to day work. Another example of something that I'm, we don't have a good process in place for. One, Caitlin just presented about one book, one Northbrook. We spend a significant amount of staff time and energy on this. We do a number of programs, we purchase a number of items. And that is something that we have never done, a complete analysis. Now we can, we have that data, right? We can pull all of the individual program statistics. We can pull how many items we got, how many items we purchased. We can pull what the circulation checkouts were. Putting all of that together in a format that is understandable and that allows us to determine the effectiveness, like is this an effective use of our time? Or is this not something like, and, and I think it isn't just the quantitative data. I think also Mallory has helped us tremendously in the past with ILP and with the library, qualitative data analysis. And that, of course, is much harder. And I think for something like a one book and for a lot of our strategic plan stuff, that qualitative data analysis is, is really important to pair with the quantitative. So like I have, I am asking, like, another great example is summer reading. We do a summer reading survey and I was just talking with the managers who work on summer reading about this. I'm like, we need to do a wrap up report. We don't have that. We have all this data and we use it casually. And I'd like us to use it more thoughtfully, but we don't have the staff skills and infrastructure to be able to do that. We need someone to help us develop those systems so that we can do it. So are those examples?
Very, very helpful, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I, I think my opinion remains that the project based is a, is a better choice. I did read through kind of carefully the sort of, you know, considerations because there are always drawbacks and positives about each thing. And when I looked through the list of considerations, I, I felt I felt that those, and again, you know, this is just me, um, I could live with those. I, 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 I could, I, I, um, yeah, I felt like, uh, definitely advantages outweighed the considerations. And I thought it also gives us time to think a little more about which projects made sense. I mean, I've discussed, I talked about the annual report one, that's just because I happen to know a lot about annual reports. Um, but, uh, so, that, I talked enough.
Mallory, question, um, have you had, uh, experience with clients that have started with a project-based, uh, model, and then gone to a retainer or vice versa? And is there any applicability to the kind of usage that, um, uh, NPL would?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So I would say, because the, the longest-running one, well, that's not true. The longest, the longest-running retainer-based one that I've been involved in is actually a grants-focused one. And I do like some data management in the context of that too, but it's for a nonprofit in Evanston. And that's one that I am a co, um, consultant on, and so I'm technically like a subcontract of that retainer that's with them. Um, that one, I think maybe right before I came on board was just a project-based one that turned into a retainer-based one, but that wasn't a thing that I negotiated. My, one with Oak Park Public Library, I think that one's unique because I was a staff member before I started with them. So I guess, I guess there are like some parallels to that then with the, um, to, you know, starting with the project-based thing and then going to a retainer-based one. I was their full-time manager of data analytics for two and a half years before we made that switch, um, over to me in the consultant role. Um, and I think that, that ended up working out really well. We had those couple of years to sort of build that relationship, and, you know, I knew all of the staff members, and like, we, we had that rapport, and I had a really good sense of what the data infrastructure was and what things they needed. Um, but I think that would be the closest, um, analogy to starting project-based and then going retainer-based. There hasn't been one that I've had where I was retainer-based and then went to project-based. It's either just been project-based all the way, like ILP is a good example of that, that there were at least two, maybe three. I think there were two, because there was one that had, it was structured sort of the way this one is, where there was a table with, I think, three or four different projects within the contract. We did that one, and then a year later, there was another project-based one with ILP.
Is that answer?
I have a question.
Hi, Mallory.
Hi.
Where does professional development come into this? It's like, you can fish or teach somebody what. Because some of these things, uh, and certainly the staff has more than enough on their plate. But are there opportunities for our staff to grow into, and, and maybe as a natural progression in their job description, where they are also interested in pursuing the data part of it?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see even small classes or things like that where it's making sure that not only do you have the expertise, but even if there isn't expertise to manage the program, but it's to understand it and how to use it and what benefits there are.
Mm-hmm. No, that's a great question. And there's actually, in the retainer-based version, in that table that's on page two, the very last bullet point, that's in that sort of miscellaneous data consultation, is individual or group consultation or training related to it. That's something that I had included, um, in the, um, retainer-based contract that I had with Oak Park before, knowing that, you know, sometimes it's going to be like a one-on-one thing, where it's almost like coaching, right? To help people like feel more confident in their skills engaging with data, but that sometimes there would also be like a training for the managers about something or things like that. And we didn't, we want, we included that in that contract because we're like, had that sense that it would be really good to build some of that internal capacity, but didn't know quite yet what they wanted to prioritize, but knew that was a thing that was important. Um, and so I included that in this one too, um, because I assumed that was probably going to be something that felt important to you all as well, to be able to not feel like, you know, you're spending money on getting some professional external support, but if that goes away, then what do you have, right? Like, would never want to leave you in a place where you felt like you hadn't, you didn't have, whether it was reference documents or trainings that had happened, or, or things like that, that would allow people to feel like they could confidently, um, interact with the tools that had been made for them. So yeah, that's a great question, and that, there's absolutely space for that.
Mallory, maybe you could also talk, because I think that we also, Mallory did a lot of that with the Data Numbers Committee with Illinois Libraries Present. And that was that whole committee that you really met with and talked with. And so maybe you could talk a little bit about some of the, um, things you did after the dashboard was created for ILP.
Yeah.
I think, I know you spent a lot of time with them.
Yeah, one of the big things with them was around surveys, like survey design. Um, because I think that, you know, we've all, we've all at least taken a survey, if, if not made one ourselves before. But then when it comes down to it for you to actually put one together, like, there's actual, you know, like, skills and methods that go into developing, um, a, a survey that's going to give you what you want, right? That's going to give you good data. And so I remember, I'm trying to think back to twenty twenty-two. I remember that being a big thing because there were a couple of different surveys with member libraries, that went out for that. I'm trying to remember some of the other one-off things that happened right after we had done the dashboard and the annual report, because the annual report was the first thing that we did.
The annual report.
For the pilot report. And then we did the dashboard. I did some of that mapping of the GIS mapping for.
That, yes.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, my memory is failing me. I apologize. I remember the survey work, though.
What is our, um, what's the process here? Are we deciding tonight which one to do? Or are you making a recommendation to the board?
I am not making a recommendation. Because I've been listening. So you guys are going to get to decide, but I'm giving you, no, no, no. So we, we don't, we don't, you guys can make a decision tonight? You don't have to. It is entirely up to the board and what you would like to do.
I feel like we've spent, I'm just going to jump in, we spent a lot of time on this, more so than we usually do with other consultants' contracts and proposals and information. I'm wondering why this is different, because I feel like some of these conversations are conversations that you and Kelly and Anna might be having one-on-one, separate from us. I feel like we're getting a little bit more in the weeds on this than we usually do. And I'm just wondering, A, if I'm the only one who is seeing it that way, and B, why that is, if it's not. Does it, does that make sense?
I think the cost was what caused us to look at this more closely last month, and I'm happy to be.
No, I, I was about to say, I think it's, it's a considerable cost, and it, but, and it's, I think, I think, I think sometimes the value proposition is, and I, I mean nothing, I don't mean anything. Sometimes the value proposition is very, very clear. And I think this one, perhaps, maybe it's, you know, we're not experts in statistics or analytics. It was not as clear, or it's not as clear. And it's a lot of money when, right, not as clear.
To the point of it being a lot of money, I have a follow-up question, where you are going to feel like you're making a recommendation. So sorry.
Um, if we- I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm-
Sure, you're, you're doing great.
Okay.
Um, that was feedback.
Thank you.
If you needed to prioritize projects out of the four.
Oh, I've already done that.
Uh-huh. What would you prioritize?
Well, let me share with you what my prioritization list is. Um, I think that the Enhanced Internal Data Dashboard is the top priority. That is going to provide, um, one, I think it's going to be the easiest thing to get off the ground, because we already have so much infrastructure. It's really, um, just layering on. I think it would also be the thing that is most immediately beneficial to staff and that we can at most immediately start seeing results and using. After that, I would say that the, um, I feel that the IPLAR and Illinet data isn't that complicated, which I think is not shared by ninety-nine percent of staff. So I would put that second, so that we could streamline that. One of the things, one of the reasons we did this data dashboard was, of course, to have, um, it more accessible to the community and the board. But another reason was also to streamline the amount of time and effort we were spending collecting data. Um, IPLAR and Illinet are both the two mandatory reports that we have to provide currently to the state. Um, and staff do spend a lot of time. It would be great to automate those as much as possible. We've done a lot of that work already, but I, there is, as Mallory pointed out, more to do. So that would be my second project. My third project would be the Strategic Plan Outcomes Dashboard. And that really is, you know, as you know, we talked about the strategic plan and having really specific criteria for our outcomes and what we're going for. In order to assess that, there has to be some type, like, we're going to do surveying, we're going to collect data, but how are we going to look at it? And so that, I think, could be, like, that is like a, yes, we don't need it like today, but we're coming on the end of year one. And if we want to start, like, in two weeks, the management team, we're going to be talking about, how are we assessing our effectiveness with the strategic plan for that end of year one? Having something that we could use that is not only going to help staff know whether or not we were effective, but also something that we can share with the community, like, you asked for this. This is what we did to meet that need, and this is how effective it was, I think, is something, but I could see that being, something that could be, could wait a little bit. The annual report, I, this is just a dream I've had for years, that Linda and I, we just never can find the time for it. I also, I love the Park District Stewardship Report, which I think is very data-heavy. And I agree that most of the annual reports are more marketing, but I think that I would love to have something that really shows the ROI. Like, we bring in this amount of dollars, this is what is, this is what we're returning. Um, and having Mallory work with me, Anna, and Linda on putting something together that really shows the actual value, um, a- at an annual basis is a dream, but is not a, like, need-to-have. That is a, a nice-to-have. So that is my priority order for the four projects.
And do you include in the, um, in, in the per-project, the, the sort of, the internal dashboard is sort of coupled with this instructional?
Yes.
Menu. So, does that wrap into priority one?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
And is it realistic that all four of those projects would be done in like a twelve-month term? I should ask you that. Like, what's the, how long do you think it would really take to do those five, four priorities?
Those four priorities. I think that they could be done within a four-year period. I think it would depend on, or four, four years. Why did I say four?
Definitely.
Four priorities, one-year period. Um, I think that the only way that it wouldn't is if there, if it were the retainer-based approach, and there was something that came up that wasn't expected, that Kate said, this is actually really a priority, drop working on that for right now, work on this, that then that could push the timeline back. But if it was just focusing on those projects, like, I think those could get done within twelve months. I was, the other thing I was going to say too, was that the first two that you named, Kate, are the ones that I think will require the least, like, time and work from staff, too. Whereas like, I think about the monthly stats, um, project, that was obviously like, I needed a lot of you guys' time, right, for us to get clear on what needed to go into that, and for you to answer questions that I had. The, that's going to be a lot of independent work, I think, in that first one on my part. Obviously needing to like, check in with folks and, and get feedback and things like that. But it's not building a thing entirely from scratch, the way that that monthly stats dashboard was. And I think the same thing is, um, true for the IPLAR and Illinet piece too. I mean, I think that probably for the Illinet piece, that there would be some work, some of Kim's time that would be needed about some of the additional reports we might need, um, to be pulling beyond what we already, what's already being pulled for the monthly stats. Um, but I just, so I just wanted to name that too. I think that like, the year one and two are probably the least intensive in terms of me needing access to staff's time to get it done. Whereas I think the strategic plan dashboard is a good example of one where that's going to be a lot of-
And heavy involvement.
Collaboration.
With, with the entire management team. Because, right, everyone has projects that relate to it.
Yeah. And I say that to speak to like the timeline piece, because like you and I were talking about how, uh, when we were, we're talking about the retainer-based potential option, that you were like, I'm worried about asking to do too much, like, the, the other end of like trying to, like, overuse time. And I was naming how, like, staff availability ends up functioning like a natural check on some of that, like, over-using of hours, like, you know, overworking the, a consultant. Um, because not everybody's just sitting around waiting for me to reach out to them and say, I need you to work with me on this data project. Um, yeah.
That's helpful. And I mean, I guess I just would also point out, when we talk about the term, it looks like, I presume it was Julie, put in like a termination for convenience clause, so, I mean, it's a lot of downside, right? Like, if things aren't moving along or whatever, we can part ways.
Not that we want to, that's not, that's against you.
You know, I'm an attorney.
I'm an attorney, so I think of like worst-case scenarios. So, that's just, I thought, thinking out loud. Did I, I just want to make sure I answered, when you were bringing up the questions, did I answer all of the questions?
You know, I, I think so. I think it was just a general sort of, um, I, I, again, I, I feel that the goals could be accomplished with the per-project basis. Especially, you know, your top priorities. And, you know, and, and I'm not, I don't know, I mean, whether we need a lot of, you would know better than I, but, um, sort of ongoing, everyday support, you need to be able to call at any moment. For data support, but that's just, that was my thinking, and I think you certainly answered a lot of questions.
All right, good. More question, um. If you were providing, um, group training, one-on-one training, um, outside of, uh, you know, as a separate, um, product, what would be the hourly costs for something like that?
Um, I'd be using the same hourly rate that outlined in this, unless there was something that we want to talk about negotiating, like a lump sum for, like, you know, training X. Um, but otherwise, it would be the same hourly rate.
I have many options here. As we always do. Um, we can table this again until next month, because that's always an option. Um, we can entertain a motion to approve the project-based contract as presented. We can provide a cap to how much we're willing to spend on project-based. We can approve retainer-based as presented. You can create a new motion, but I have not thought of. Did I miss something?
Um, no, I don't think.
Okay, great.
Those felt like, those are all the options I have.
If we went with the per-project basis, does that, does that, you know, mean we would do every single one of these, like, by saying that's, that's what we're voting on, that's what we're going to do, does that mean we are saying yes to all of these projects?
It doesn't have to.
It doesn't.
That's why, when I said we could cap how much we spend, we can say, up to this amount on these two projects.
Yeah. Or want you to do these two projects and then come back for the others.
Yeah. And that's why I separated it out in the table too, for you to see individually rather than just a lump.
Okay. And then the, the annual, it's a monthly for the retainer, and it's a monthly cost, and then-
Yeah.
Um, I guess, I, I know you're not, I, I obviously, when we joined the board, like, newer, so I don't know the impetus of like the not making your recommendation, like, piece. But I guess I really am looking for feedback. I'm sorry, Stacy. I just, I, I don't, so I just, I'm trying to work through, like, what are the needs of the library? And I've been, what, okay, like, what, what is it, like, you really need? And is this, I mean, is having Mallory on retainer for twelve months, like, is that would be really helpful? Could that move the ball forward for you? But more than just retainer? I'm just trying to understand, like, what would be better from your perspective?
Um, so, let me answer your first question. So we had a couple of months ago, well, I think you were there, right? Um, with the IPBC health insurance stuff, and the board really appreciated not having a specific recommendation. And so, um, asked that we- And so, asked that we try this, of like, we're not gonna make a recommendation to give you guys the opportunity to have those deeper conversations, instead of just being like, well, Kate suggested this, so this is what we're gonna do. So that is the reason, but of course, like, I'm happy to answer questions and can say, like, what my preference is. We just didn't wanna lead with that. So that kind of hopefully explains that part of it. And so, in terms of what would best serve the library, I, I wanna just acknowledge, I love data. I, like, spreadsheets are one of my love languages. It is something that I feel very passionately about. That is unique, I mean, right?
But my next immediate thought was spreadsheets and slide decks.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, I also love slide decks, which I have been refraining from.
You're doing great.
Thank you. It's very hard. So, for the library, in library land, you would think that we would be a very data-heavy field, but we are not. The library world is largely made up of English lit majors and people who don't like numbers. And so, this is something that has been a hard-fought battle. I'll give an example of when Kelly came on board, and she had been using at her last library this great collection development tool that was basically a data analytics tool for analyzing collections. And I was like, yes! It took us, I would say, two years to get people, like, after getting it, onboarding, training, getting everyone, getting everyone on board and actually actively using it regularly. Right? Would you say? I think that's. And so now we've been using it for nine years, eight years, we'll say eight. And, cause I don't think, it wasn't immediately when you started. And now it's woven into the fabric. Each time we do a survey of staff, we hear, I'm so sick of all this data nonsense. I'm so sick of this. So we are, I think it's critically important to show our value. I think that it isn't the answer to everything, but I think in the world we are in right now, where we need to not only know for ourselves whether what we're choosing to do with the limited time and resources we have is effective, but what does our community think, and what are, what are we showing them? And also talking with our legislators, having this is super helpful to be able to tell our story. This is not something that we already have baked into the organization. This is something that, even though I'm deeply passionate about, is not something that I can spend all my time on. This is not a project that, you know, we need to have, we need to grow more staff excitement around this. And it has been, like, we do have more staff now that I think are excited. We've grown that through the years. But now they need training and knowledge. I think that we're still building our infrastructure, and that we absolutely, you know, I can see the benefit of doing a project-based to get that infrastructure built. I do think that there is the ongoing support that would be really helpful. And so, I obviously, you know, last month, brought a retainer base because I think that would be the most useful and flexible for us. And I recognize that it is a lot of money. And so I also think that if we wanted to start and do a project-based in order to make sure that we're actively using it, and that I'm, you know, in working with Mallory, that we are actually, you know, hitting the targets we're saying we're gonna hit, doing the things we said we were gonna get done. I think that's also good. I think what would be not good is saying it's, none of this is important and we shouldn't move forward. So, I don't know, that still wasn't, like, fully a recommendation, but hopefully came in.
What's the trade-off? What are we spending money on? What are we not spending money on that's essential as well as putting money into this? Are we missing something that's gonna make a difference to staff, to clients? I mean, this is a substantial amount of money, so what are we not going to be able to fund if we're funding this?
I, I think that's a great question, Barbara. I would say that we have allocated money for data because of the strategic plan and some of the work we do. So we have allocated money specifically for this in the budget, so it was pre-planned to be able to do that. I don't think there's anything specific, I don't think that there's an exact one-to-one correlation. I think with anything, we have to assess what the overall needs are, and then we look at, you know, we have a number of fixed costs, our building is aging. That is something that we absolutely need to keep allocating additional funding for. And I think that there are other costs that we continue to look at and analyze to say, is this still effective? Do we still need X amount of this? Do we still, you know, can we reduce in this way? We know that it is not sustainable to just always keep, like, increasing things and increasing things. So, every year when we budget, we look at all of that, and I think that in terms of the trade-offs, might it mean that we then decide if we move forward with this, that we wouldn't? I'm like genuinely trying to think of, like, something that would be an exact, like, one-to-one.
Well, even if it comes to reupholstering chairs, or whatever it is, what's the perception of the community going to be in terms of how you're spending that money? And I, I'm not saying that this isn't important, but I think that in, in the face of things, an upholstered chair is gonna get a response. A data, whatever, is what we're going to respond to. But again, that's what I'm talking about, in terms of trade-off. So, I would like to just, I don't know, Stacy, if this is appropriate. I would like to propose that we go for the project-based for the first two on Kate's list, plus professional development.
I think that sounds reasonable. And I would also agree that I think that we have to really balance this with what the community would value. And I feel like that we, the facilities is something that we really need to put time and attention and money towards. And I think that, just from a standpoint of time and attention, if we're putting resources of staff time and money to this, that means that there's less time and attention that's going to other ongoing things. So I, I think Barbara's proposal sounds very reasonable, but I'm open to other suggestions.
I think we went to the John Book Library, and we were so taken with the ceiling and the chairs and the cabinetry and, you know, did, did anybody explain to us what the data is? No, that, and again, it's just how do you balance the public perception and the needs so that you're not giving up one for the other?
Can I lip Barbara's question and ask for a little bit of fortune-telling slash challenge expertise? Are there ways in which this is an investment that potentially saves the library money in the future? Like, have you seen examples of people doing data analysis and then being able to recoup costs by changing a programming strategy, or pulling back from some other efforts or projects?
That I don't think I have an example of that I could off the top of my head give right now. But I could come back with an example.
I, I like Barbara's suggestion. I, I, I would like to, you know, take top priorities and, and give her the ability to fulfill those priorities. And really, there's nothing stopping us, you know, as we move ahead and coming back and saying, you know what? We need those other, other pieces. I do think we have to be, we have to be thoughtful about the money we spend and how the community would perceive that, and so I would.
I would also say, it's been a long time since we've looked at any, like, estimates for the building renovation.
We're gonna be right in that this fall.
Gonna be bad, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, yeah.
I just wanna note, if we're, we're talking about the physical structure of the building as a priority, and the data infrastructure of the building as less of a priority, that's what I'm hearing from this group. And for me, I think both need to be treated on equal measure. And that the ability to be able to communicate through data has an impact on the costs related to the physical infrastructure itself. How many times do you need to fix windows? Cause birds are running into them. How many, what, what, what's the, you know, average age of the, you know, infrastructure, and it's, it's likely to burst and ruin a room?
But none of this data that we're talking about.
But, but specifically to the amount of money. If we're talking about the cost for the retainer package we're talking about, and this is, you know, English major, back of the math, back of the neck and envelope math, we're talking about, about a hundred and eighty-five dollars per day, or about twenty-three hours per hour for an eight-hour day. Are we spending in staff time more than twenty-three dollars an hour in time that they're porting data from one place to another? Not being able to make a, a, a data-informed decision on a program? And, and being able to communicate that data to, being able to communicate through data to the community, the decisions that they made. To me, that is an incredible value. If the goal is to create a organization that is data conversant, and in an age where funding, whether it's at the state level, national level, or local level, needs to be justified in terms that people can interact with. Data is a, is a tool through which that interaction is, can be less emotive and more analytic. So, from that perspective, the retainer model seems like an incredible value to me.
Good question. So this project, because obviously it precedes our time, was this like a retainer, or was this a project?
It was a project.
And, and I think Adam makes some very good points. I, I feel that, you know, fighting off the, the two, Kate's top two priorities would, you know, achieve some of those goals. And again, there's nothing in the world preventing us from then saying, that was fabulous. Now we need to, you know, continue to lower data.
Like, as we are doing the update of the facility plan, looking at how many people are sitting on the upholstery and how frequently we need to replace it, looking at the door counts and where people are using it, being able to pull those numbers and, and dig more deeply into this.
So maybe that's where we need dollars for data analysis, or at least in part.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I was just gonna say, too, as you were speaking, Adam, it was making me think of an example that I don't, I don't have, like, hard numbers, like, it saved this many dollars. But some of the things that, like, at Oak Park, for example, that I know are, would fall into that bucket of, like, things that come up that you didn't anticipate when you were putting the proposal together, but I'm on retainer, and so I'm here to do that work. There's a lot of data analysis requests, and I remember doing, like, deeper dive into how study rooms and meeting rooms were used. Deeper dives into traffic patterns, too, like, by hour, by day, that helped with informing their open hours. And whether or not do, cause they'd hear from people in surveys, like, we wish you were open at this time on Sunday. And you never know if that's just, you know, this person and their friend that would like that, or if there's any truth to the fact that, like, is there really, like, a lot of traffic? Are people waiting outside in the, the front door? And so would want to be coming in earlier, or is it actually pretty slow on some of those days, and so it's okay to stick with those? Or do we need to think about, like, when we open and close on certain days? And so I think that's an example that, you know, if, if that was something that was discovered, and you're like, yeah, we could actually open at this different time, that would have implications for, like, financially, if you're thinking about staffing service desks and just, like, having the building open. But I think those are things that, in my experience, are things that would come up most frequently of, like, we actually wanna look closer at this thing, can you do a deeper dive about this and, and give us a report back? And then things like analyzing surveys and, or, or helping staff put surveys together in the first place, like, to actually get the data that they need. So I just wanted to share that, since it came up, as, as you were speaking.
There is, I mean, Barbara made a motion.
Barbara made a motion?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve project-based for the first two projects, which would be, add professionals about, I was, just kidding. I was going to name the first two projects for the purpose of the motion, which are the enhanced internal dashboard and the Iplar and Illinett reporting, as well as staff professional development. So we have a motion, and it's been seconded.
Clarification on that?
Yeah.
When you say staff development, if you're making a motion, are you making a motion to approve the amounts right now? Or are you asking us to come back with an amount for the staff development next month? Or are you doing a not-to-exceed amount?
Barbara, you made the motion.
I think that, I would like to see you come back. And I would like to see the, the hourly breakdown. In other words, if we're going to be doing that on an hourly basis, what are we talking about? Are we talking about large group? Are we talking individual? Are we talking, you know, subject area?
Should have a motion just for the first two, and then we're gonna examine the, the staff training.
Do a mini vote next month on the, is that a thing?
It can be, of course.
Yeah. So, could change it.
So, Barbara, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, great.
I would like to move that we approve a project-based agreement with Mallory and her company, based on the two highest priorities in Kate's wishlist, which is not formalized. And I didn't, no professional development included in this motion.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Great. Okay, Jennifer, can we get a roll called?
Mr. Bazer?
Yes.
Ms. Beben?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Baker Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Nicole?
Yes.
Thank you!
Just to clarify for myself, the next, we know next month, like.
Correct. Mallory and I will work on a plan of what that would look like, and bring back a proposal that shows. We're probably not gonna, Mallory, just come all the way out here again, don't talk about the staff training. But, um, we will have a new proposal that will include, that will be first act.
Thank you all so much for so much time on your.
No, we appreciate your, your perspective.
Thank you so much.
Safe driving.
Thank you. It'll be easy getting home right now.
Yeah, right?
Does anyone else need a break before we move on?
Thank you.
Moving into new business, executive director, I can't talk, executive director quarterly check, go check it, I left a whole word out.
Yeah, so, there was an error in my report that said that the goals were made in May. They, we didn't make the goals until June. So that was a lie, and I apologize. I structured it the same way I did last year, where I listed each of the goals, and then as we move through the year, I'll just continue to add updates so that you can see the progression. We've already made some progress on some of the goals, starting with the strategic plan execution. Last month, we did the strategic plan check-in, and I provided the RACI model and showed where everyone, who was responsible for what things, and shared where we were at with the strategic plan stuff. On a couple of the specific strategic plan items, Becky has already started pulling together information for the benefits analysis that we're doing this year. And we're meeting to talk about overarching goals and plans for that project work, and that will be coming. And that will be coming, um, to the board likely later this fall. Anna and I, Anna's on vacation this week, enjoying a lovely time in Alaska. And so we will be working when she, she gets back, I'm then gone. But then in September, we'll be working on putting together that, um, a plan for the master facility plan revision and looking at that. And that is going to then be the top priority, um, in Anna, for Anna and I, um, because we know that this is long overdue. Um, and then finally, more Becky stuff. Becky has been working with Lily Zhang on getting the follow-up to the baseline survey from Lily out, which will be coming out next month, um, and going out to all staff. So that will then be presented to the board. Depending on when in September it ends up going out or waiting to hear back from Lily, I would expect it either at the October or November board meeting that Lily would be making a presentation, um, because it does take them a bit to analyze all of the data. Because there's a lot of qualitative data that gets incorporated into that. Of course, we're still working on a bunch of other strategic plan projects. Those just aren't officially like, I'm not officially calling those out. So one of the other, um, goals is delegating projects and expanding leadership team ownership. One of the things that I know I've talked about, but that I think has, I'm already seeing a positive impact on is the change in the reporting structure that we did. So Kelly is now supervising all of the public service managers. I am only supervising, uh, the director level and our marketing manager, um, and of course, wonderful Jennifer. And so that has, um, freed up my time. The goal is also to streamline decision-making with that process. And I think we're already starting to see some of the positive benefits, even though it's only been two months. Yeah, so, um, and Becky, um, and I have started brainstorming and Becky's working on a roles and responsibilities document to better outline. We're starting at the leadership level, but then plan to have it kind of go down into each, um, into the management level. And then hopefully within each department to just better define who is responsible for what and who, um, ultimately is responsible for or can make those decisions. One of the things that Lily has been talking to us and that we've been working on is pushing down decision-making to staff. It works sometimes, people don't like to make decisions. And so this is something that we will be continuing to work on and that we really feel that this document, um, while only a document, but it will help give us some structure and saying like, well, no, you can decide that. And, and then say like, you should decide that. I think there is the wanting to decide, but then when actually having to decide, that doesn't always go. So that will be continuing, um, and I'm very excited about that. Uh, also kind of in terms of the board communication, I've been shifting how I am presenting stuff in, um, the reports and reducing the number of PowerPoint presentations, changing how I'm structuring the memos to hopefully give you all the, the amount of information you need without it feeling overwhelming. And so I would, I know that this is me sharing, but I would like to ask if there was anything that you feel is missing or that, um, because I, I am, I like a lot of words. I'm trying to reduce the amount of words I have. Like when I wrote my first book, our, we had to cap it at fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand. Uh, we started with eighty-five thousand and had to cut thirty thousand. So like, I like words and I know this, but I am, so, but I would like to make sure that you're all getting the amount of information that you feel you need and that you're not feeling like you're missing any crucial information that you want to have that I'm not providing.
It's been a good, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I'll continue to keep working on this. And those are all of my updates. I'm happy to answer any questions or go into more detail on anything. But a good couple of months, progress already made, which makes my brain happy.
Any questions? Are you finding it helpful? Is it providing you with a structure and a direction to be able?
To, you mean with the, these specific goals? I think it is helpful. I think, um, you know, as with anything, you know, um, you have an idea in your head, but then the actual execution is going to be a little different, so, um, but.
Gets in the way?
Life does get in the way. I just am so thrilled, like it's, I've, I'm filled with so much joy that we have a strategic plan that, that's just like, this is what we're doing. This is what we're focusing on and not that we can't change things, but it just makes it so much easier to say like, no, we can't do that. Like I was talking, um, to Linda and she was like, oh, we could blah, blah, blah. I said, and how does that fit into the strategic plan? She's like, oh. I said, so we can change the strategic plan, we can shift, because of course that's, but is that something we want to shift to? And she's like, oh, no, I don't think so. And so it's, it's helping, I think tremendously with staff capacity, um, and certainly with mine as well. Any other questions or feedback for Kate?
I think this is the fourth month without a slide deck.
Next month, there's going to be a slide deck because we have the levy. Wait, there's too much, it's fine. There's going to be a slide. Thank you, Adam.
Um, well, I appreciate the update and I think you are making great progress. And I appreciate how you have incorporated the feedback from the board into your updates.
I so appreciate all the feedback.
Great, we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Um, we have no reason to go into closed session, so we will skip that. Agenda building for next month, we will, uh, welcome our new facilities manager with an introduction. We will review the closing schedule for the upcoming year. We will revisit the data analysis support, particularly professional development, staff training. We will be joined by Sheldon Fox for our audit presentation. Uh, we will get an update on the room rental policy updates. A, we are punting the RFP for access controls through October. Uh, we will also be joined by Linda with an update on the website project. And we will have a fiscal year twenty-six tax levy draft presentation. Is there anything anyone would like to add to that list? I, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we know that this is a dense agenda. Some of it's just the cyclical nature of the work that we do. To the extent that we're able, the plan is that we will post documents in the trustee portal as they become available. So you're not getting a multi-hundred-page packet less than a week before the board meeting to review. So we will let you know as documents become available and then you can review them at your leisure, um, in all of your free time between your jobs and your families and everything else. So we will do our best to make sure that you have that information as soon as it's available to you. Okay, anything else for the good of the cause?
Maybe if the people giving presentations next month sort of knew to sort of stress brevity.
We've all been given time rates.
All right, good.
I'm getting ready to go.
The gavel.
I don't like the gavel. Okay, uh, we will adjourn at eight forty PM. Thank you, everyone.